Everyone, welcome. I will call the meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. And I'll ask everybody to stand for the singing of the National Anthem, please.
I'd like to.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to have a discussion about the unhoused in vestibule in the front of the office here. Add that, or you just want to?
Yeah.
Have a discussion afterward?
No, we'll have that. We will add that to number 10, council-initiated items. 10.1, 10.1 Civic Center foyer?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Vestibule, whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you get that, Ms. Thompson? Okay, perfect. So that's 10.1. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda with the addition of 10.1 Civic Center vestibule discussion? Thank you very much, Councilwoman Comanna. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the September 4th regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the September 4th? Councilwoman Clark, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. This morning, there is no proclamations, public hearings, or delegations. So we'll jump right into our decision items. First up is 9.1, 2025 budget presentation and deliberation dates. Ms. Alvera Thompson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Each year, administration presents the operating capital budgets for the following year. Administration requests that council approve one of the following set of four days in November for budget deliberations. November 14th, 15th, 18th, and 19th, or November 28th, 29th, and December 2nd and 3rd. Members of the public are also welcome to attend these meetings, and they will be public. Any questions?
Very much for that. So there are a couple of different dates presented for this year's budget.
Yeah, so they will be Thursday, Friday, and then we'll have the weekend to make some changes. And then Monday, Tuesday.
Both are Thursday, Friday?
Correct. Both are the same structure. Yep.
Just trying to think. We've got a lot of conferences coming up, a lot of kind of save the dates. We have nothing that we can think of that's conflicting with that. Go ahead, Councilwoman Evans.
I just have a sustainability committee meeting on the 19th. Can shuffle that around a bit if the other dates don't work for council, though.
So the only date, November 14th, is the Oilers versus Nationals game.
I, our recommendation, my recommendation was the 28th, 29th, 2nd, and 3rd. So if that works, then that would be great.
Okay, 28th, 29th, and then the 2nd and 3rd.
There's also a community safety meeting on November 14th, so we just have to move that probably.
Looking at the second set.
Oh, 28th, 29th.
Yeah, and that works good for everyone, administration. Yeah?
So far.
Okay, so is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Go ahead, Councilwoman Evans.
Let me see. I'll make the motion that council approved the 2025 budget dates for December 2nd.
Oh, November 28th.
Sorry, November 28th, 29th, December 2nd, and December 3rd.
Yep, okay, perfect.
As per AIR 24-218.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Sure, go ahead, Councilwoman Comanna.
Thank you. Not about the dates, but process.
Sure.
Thank you. Just are we kind of going through the process as we're gonna come up with the interim budget and then the final budget? Or have we come back to the process of what we were doing before?
I'm, I don't know if I'm 100% understanding the question, but the process will be likely somewhere in the middle. So where we're gonna make some cuts to try to come down a little bit, but still bring forward some decisions for council at the end as well. So it won't be, you know, the budget that will be presented likely won't fall within your desirable rate, per se. But then we'll go through and make the cuts as needed to have councils' vision met for both the projects and the taxes. So it'll be a bit of both. I mean, at the end of the day, it is council's decision. Council should make the cuts as needed. They should make the hard decisions. However, we understand that when there's, we're in the situation we're in, and there's so much there that we will bring that down so that it's less overwhelming when it does come to council.
Sure. No, thank you for that. But my question was more on the process of, remember, we were doing a kind of attentive budget with the tax rates? And then we were doing the final numbers.
Oh, in the spring?
Right.
We were, yeah, we're gonna do the same. That part is gonna be the same this year. Yeah, we'll do final budget in December. For, from an administrative perspective, it is a lot less work to go over everything again in the spring. So I'll, we'll find some ways to make sure that council feels comfortable with the taxes, regardless of the assessments, so that you can make that final decision in November, December, of course. At the end of the day, I can't force a final budget to be passed, but that's the goal. However, the capital does have to be passed legislatively. The capital does have to be passed in the year prior to the budget coming into effect. It'd just be the operating that potentially we could deliberate again in the spring, which some municipalities do. Some municipalities do it the way we do. There is kind of, it's kind of a mixed bag. The, the, kind of the positive to doing it in the spring, the final deliberation, is because we have the assessments. But aside from that, we're, you know, three months or four months into the year. So if you're gonna make cuts to the operating budget, it makes it a little tough sometimes. You're not really gonna make cuts. If anything, you're gonna increase it if we have found out by that time in the year that it's not gonna be enough. So my recommendation would be just to pass it in December.
Thank you, Alvera.
Thank you very much for that. Any other comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. And I believe you are up next for the next decision item, which is 9.2, franchise fees revenue.
Thank you. So every year, council has the option to increase the franchise fees rates through our utility distributors, which are Fortis and ATCO. This is for having infrastructure such as pipelines and transmission lines on municipal lands. Excuse me. These charges are collected during billing by the distributors, who later forward the payments back to the municipality. So if we want the new rates, potentially, if we want the new rates to be in effect as of the beginning of the year, then it has to be passed by November. I believe, I can't remember the exact date. That's why it's before you today, because we kind of want to make it line up with budget. So the current rate for Fortis is 10% is our rate. And the maximum you're allowed, the cap, is 20%. The average is 13.4. So we're falling a little below the average, meaning other municipalities, what other municipalities are doing. The 2024 budgeted revenues are $997,000. And the 2025 estimated revenues at the following rates will be as follows. 10%, which is what we're at right now. So you see that there's a slight increase regardless of a change in rates. And so the estimated revenues right now would sit at just over a million, a million 38. If you increase it to 12%, it'd be 1.2 million. And if you increase it to 14%, it'd be 1.4 million. So that's Fortis. And then for ATCO, the current rate is 22%. The maximum is 35, and the average is 19.7. The 2024 budgeted revenues was 563,000. The 2025, as it stands, would be 576,000. With an increase of 2%, it would be 628,000. And an increase of 4% would be 681,000. And so attached, you'll see a little spreadsheet of the impact to the average residential customer, I guess. And for Fortis right now, it's $100 a year. And for ATCO, it's $125 a year. And then you can see what the nominal effect would be with any increases today. And then also, I have just the total combined increase in revenues that 2% would gain us is 260,000. So I can answer any questions on that now. Oh, the other thing I was gonna mention that sometimes, not that the fees is not really the intent of the fees, but it is a way for us to get some revenue from other levels of government that don't necessarily pay taxes. So schools, hospitals, even, even the provincial bodies or buildings that do pay taxes, they pay at whatever rate they choose essentially, like the courthouse or CP station. Those are buildings that we get what's called grants in lieu. And so the government decides how much they're gonna pay in taxes at any given year. Sometimes it's 50%, sometimes 75%, sometimes it's 25% of what any other person or business would pay in town. So this is, you know, obviously, we can't just put franchise fees on them, but it is a way that we can at least collect some fees back from buildings like that. And I can answer any questions?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Councilwoman Comanna?
Thank you. When you talked about those organizations and buildings, there's no way that we can separate them, right?
No, no.
So you do have on here the residential bill impact. So when you talk about the other commercial users, where do you see that?
We just don't get that information from Fortis. Like, they provide us information for the average residential, but they don't provide us the business impact.
So we don't really know what that impact would be?
Not to the business, no.
Target, the hospital, or the?
Oh, no, no, I have no idea.
We have no idea.
I don't have a way of getting the hospital's power bill, for example. And it's, that's not, yeah, I don't know how much it is. How much we're gaining, you're asking like how much we're getting from the hospital, for example?
Yeah, because when you use the example in your, in your presentation about how this would be a way to gather, I guess, the return on revenue that we don't normally see in tax base, that this way coming from the hospital or from that. So I guess my question and concern is that, you know, this residential bill impact is presented here, but only for residential. So we don't see the commercial side, so we don't really know if there is an impact or what that impact looks like, I think, is just my question.
Well, there's definitely an impact. It's a lot more, because their bills are bigger buildings. We just don't get that information from Fortis, unfortunately. I can ask, see if they can provide it in the future. I'm, yeah, I'm not sure, but there's definitely some sort of impact, because they also have power bills and gas bills, right?
And their rates would be the same straight across the board?
Yeah. The 10%, you mean?
No, like, without, like, every day, without the increase or not the increase, they're paying the exact same commercial, because we're only seeing the residential here, right? We're sitting at 10% now, so.
Oh, the 10% is the same. It's just the impact. I just have the impact for residentials, but the rates are the same. Yeah.
And we know that for certain?
Yes.
I guess my only other question would be is, I do understand, you know, we talk about inflation all the time. We talk about just the cost of living and everything going up. But it always seems too like that we're just downloading this onto residents, right? So it's just another, and I, and I mean, I don't know how to get around that. I don't know how we can advocate and, and change that. But those types of fees are going up continually on both sides, you know? Any other questions? Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Councilor Sherris?
So as recommended by administration, I'd like to make a motion that council approved the increase in both the Fortis Alberta Inc. and ATCO Gas and Pipeline Limited franchise fees of 2% as per AIR 24-217.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Councilwoman Comanna?
Thank you. I agree with your comments, mayor. Thoughts? I think, you know, we were going through a budget process in October, November, December, I'm sorry. We could look at, you know, of course, the municipal taxes at that point. I, I don't think we need to look at other revenues here. And it's, it's gonna be a burden to our residents. So I think if we are increasing anything, it should be the municipal taxes that we are increasing.
Rather than these ones?
Right. Thank you.
Sorry, just another comment, if I may. The, the property taxes and this fee, the payers of them are not always the same to people. So someone might not own a home, but they have a power bill, for example. So that's just something to consider, is that this catches everyone that pays a power bill, everyone that pays a gas bill, whereas property taxes is targeted only at property owners. Just another comment that I forgot to mention during the presentation.
Thank you for that. So when is the last time that the municipality raised, have we seen an increase in the franchise fees?
A long, excuse me, my goodness. A long time. I think 2017 or 2018, if I remember correctly. It's been a while.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comment, question, debate? There's a motion on the floor. Oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Clark.
I'm just looking at this, and I'm, you know, you look at the, the average, and that's just averages for all municipalities across Alberta?
Yeah, that's the number that Fortis gives us.
Good.
They don't give us access to all municipalities, so they give us a list of municipalities as examples.
Right.
So it's, yeah, so we don't have the entire database. But yeah, so we have ones that have 0%, we have ones that have the max, essentially. So they're all over the place.
I guess the way I view this is, I mean, let's try to be average at least. We're not the worst, we're not the best. I mean, on the, the gas side of things, it looks like we're a little above average. You know, maybe you just view this as try to be middle of the pack and, you know, leave one, you know, leave the gas one until such time as maybe we're below average, and just bump it up with the average. And, you know, the, the power side of things, bump that up 3.4 and leave the gas at zero and maintain.
So you're suggesting, rather than the straight across increase to the 2%, that it would just be to the, to Fortis?
Yeah, bump the power up 3.4, and then the gas, just leave it alone. Zero. That's what I would propose. You got a little something.
Oh, I do. Are you requesting? Are you requesting a friendly amendment?
I am. So I will request a friendly amendment to read such that Fortis Alberta, the average, or sorry, the rate go from 10% to 13.4, and the, and the ATCO Gas and Pipelines to just stay the same with a 0% increase.
I'll comment on it, because, I mean, I'll accept it, because I understand and I agree with you in a way. But looking at yearly increase by 2% on both, we're looking at $20 a year per household on average. It's not really an extreme increase to the point where we need to have a discussion. I think everybody's rates are going up, and so is towns, and we know what our bills are like. So that's why I made the motion, but sure, I'll accept that amendment.
Okay, Ms. Thompson, did you get the friendly amendment? So do we? Yeah. Oh, my gosh, there's two of everyone, right? So what would that, can you tell us what that new number would be, Alvera, for both? So the Fortis would stay, oh, sorry, the ATCO would stay at the 125.34 annually? And then for monthly, it would be the 10.45? And then for Fortis? Did you say 3.4? 3.4? Perfect.
How often, how often do we review these? Like, do we look at them every year?
Yeah.
Yeah? We just haven't ever moved.
Well, last year, I didn't, we talked about it, and there was, seemed like there was no appetite for it. So a presentation wasn't brought forward. We just talked about it in budget.
Right.
But we get the opportunity every year. Actually, we can do it a couple of times a year, but usually, we just do it this time of year so that it can take it into effect right at the beginning of the year.
Right, okay, thank you.
I think there's always been in the past, as Ms. Thompson had said, we haven't really changed it or looked at it since, or we've looked at it every year, but we haven't seen an increase since 2017. Is, it's of that mind, is that, that downloading, right, on to the residents? That's just another, rather than raising taxes. So there's been a friendly amendment, and Ms. Thompson is just going to provide us with what those new numbers look like. So maybe I'll ask on the new friendly amended motion. Is there any comment, question, debate on that? Nope. My only comment would be that I understand where Councilwoman Clark is coming from, since seeing that when we look at the average for both Fortis and ATCO, the average is 19.7 for ATCO and 13.4 for Fortis. So we'd be right in line with both of those now. And I do understand as well, Ms. Thompson, when she made the comment about this is a way to, you know, maybe collect a little bit of revenue from large commercial users in the community, as we're not seeing that yet from our tax base. So thank you for that. I'm just trying to stall as she's calculating some of her numbers, too. What was that? Or you're guestimating at the number? That's okay. 1.263. And that is for, I have to look again. So that will be for Fortis's.
1038.
Franchise revenue?
Correct. That would be the new.
1.263. 1.263.
13 point.
And then that would?
So it'll gain us about $140,000.
140? And then what is that residential impact per month and then annually?
The residential impact, let me just open the working spreadsheet, because this is gonna be a lot quicker. The residential impact would be for Fortis at 13.4%. Enable content. Everything's gonna fight me today, because that's just how it is when you're trying to do something on the fly.
That's all right.
13.4. 13.4. So the monthly impact will be $2.84, $2.84 a month, more than it previously was, and $34.08 a year.
34.80?
34.08.
Oh, 34.08, okay. So $2.84 monthly and 34.08 annually.
Correct.
Okay. Any further, further debate, comment, question on that? So there's a motion on the floor that was amended by Councilwoman Clark. I'll now call the motion. All in favor? All opposed? That is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Next up, we have 9.3, which is Fire Incident Management and Emergency Notification System. This is Mr. Thompson this morning. Good morning. We're gonna have to maybe change everyone's names, or we're gonna have to go by different. A lot of Thomsons, a lot of Nancys, a lot of.
Good morning, our council. So this morning, I'm here to present a proposal for the Fire Incident Management Emergency Notification System in order to continue the efficient operations of the fire service.
Hey, well, this is Kristen Duster Pop. I was seeing she was a summer student. But that is for me, and I have a. And it was already in our system, so I was like.
Speaking of technology.
Right.
Good, right. So the department is, is looking to invest in a new incident management and member notification system for the department. The current system, quite frankly, right now, is just not meeting our needs. It's not a very good system. It was purchased back in 2005. And although it has had several updates over the years, it is a very cumbersome system, and it's difficult to use. The current system in use requires that all the documents be stored on the town's server, which makes this difficult for our other stations in Breton and Lodgepole to use the system, because we don't want to inadvertently introduce a virus into the town's server. Consequently, they're not able to use this system. So they have to, they have to write out the report and then send the report to our admin at the fire department here, and then we have to retype the whole thing and put it into the system. So it's, it's a very cumbersome, awkward system. Another problem with the system is trying to find addresses for reports and incidents. Currently, right now, if the incident is not typed in exactly how it was originally typed in, then the search function won't find the, the report or the incident, which results in our admin staff having to go through incident by incident to try and, try and locate, locate it. As well, our tech support team has had multiple issues connecting with their tech support people to try and get changes made or to try and get updates to the system done. The last one we just went through, it was well over a week before we could make contact with them to, to get any changes. And as a result, we weren't able to use the system. As a result, we weren't able to use the system. Uh, currently as well, we also have a, another system, which is a phone notification system, which provides notification. Uh, of a call to members on their, using their phone. Uh, this system is totally separate from the other system I was just talking about, uh, which. Makes us have, have to use two different systems, um, so it'd be nice to be able to put this all into one system, make it easier for us. Uh, consequently, the department began to explore other companies that sell uh fire department management systems. Uh, we looked at three different companies, uh, and we found one, which was called First Due. Uh, which meets all of our needs and we are therefore recommending that we move forward with, with this new tool. Uh, this new system um provides an incident automated data entry, which integrates the, our dispatch information directly ins- into incidents, incident reports, avoiding, avoiding any manual data entry. Uh, so once the incident is, is paged out, all of the information will be populated into the new system, so we don't have to manually put it all in there. Uh, the incident management map, map, mapping and navigation will provide automatic routing to locations without having to manually input the address. So currently, right now, we have to manually input the address into our, our mapping system. Uh, this system will automatically do that for us, so we don't have to, to worry about uh manu- manually putting that into the system. It will also provide a paging alert system for members, which will automatically send a notification to a call, to, for a call to our members' uh phone. Um, the nice part about the new system is it will al- also provide updates as the membership is, is en route to the fire hall. Um, we can't get that with our current system, our current system, it just pages it out, uh, and then just tells us what the call is, but doesn't give us any updates. Uh, as well, um, this system can also be used to call in municipal staff uh in the event that we have to activate the ECC. Um, so if we have a large scale incident where the municipality administrative staff have to be called in um to work in the ECC, we are able to, to page that out and use this new system to be able to do that. Uh, pre-incident planning, which allows us the ability to link pre-incident inspection reports uh. In an emergency, so if we are called to a certain location and we have done, uh, had previous incidents there, or if we've done a pre-planned. Uh, inspection at that location, it will automatically pull that information up, so we can uh have good access to where the hydrant connections are, where the gas shut-offs are, where all of those. Uh, utilities are, so it would be very beneficial to have that information when we are uh approaching the scene. Uh, as well, it will provide uh better data and analytics, which will afford us the opportunity to easily pull out information for council. Uh, rather than going through and doing that manual, which is what we currently are doing now. So with any new system, there will be costs associated with transitioning into it. Um, but with council's approval, we'll be able to manage this through funding that has already been approved with a slight scope change to one of our current projects. Uh, currently, the department has been moving to transition our radio communication system to the new AFRAC system. Uh, during the course of this process, we were able to sign on to the federal government's National Standing Offer Program. Uh, which has, along with some operational changes, afforded us the ability uh to see significant reduction in costs in the purchase of the AFRAC radios and communication system. So the plan that we are proposing is as follows. Uh, for this year, twenty twenty-four, we have already moved forward with ordering the AFRAC radios and base stations for all three stations. Now, from the current funds that we have, that have been allotted to the AFRAC radio project, and that's at a reduced cost. Um, we are hoping to use four thousand dollars from those funds and begin the process of transitioning from our old management system to the new management system, the First Due system. Uh, this will allow us the ability to be able to be fully functional early in twenty twenty-five. Uh, in twenty twenty-five is the transitional year in which we will incur some duplicate costs as we move from the old system to the new system. Uh, so similar to twenty twenty-four, we will move forward with ordering additional radios and base stations as they are required. To fill any gaps that we need in our system. Uh, and unfortunately, at the same time, though, we will still need to continue using the old system, um, and we will be paying for that. Um, consequently, the plan is to use, uh, sorry, that should say eighteen thousand one hundred dollars, not sixteen thousand, so eighteen thousand one hundred dollars. Uh, which is the cost of the First Due program from the AFRAC pro- pro- project to cover the cost for the overlap to the, to the, from the old system to the new system. Uh, in twenty twenty-six, um, at this point, the department will be fully transitioned uh to the new radio system and incident management system. And then we will be able to use the operating dollars that we normally allot for the old system to cover the cost for the, for the new system. Um, so I, I just highlighted some of the costs that we currently pay and what we'd be paying if we moved to the new system, so. Uh, the overall operating expenses, um, the I Am Responding, which is the uh, the phone notification system is thirteen hundred bucks. The FirePro system, which is the management system we currently use, is five thousand. Um, then we have tower rental costs for both the town and the county, and you can see those costs plus repair. Uh, radio repair and maintenance costs for a total of forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars annually. That's what we pay annually for these services. If we were to move to the new system, our annual cost would be twenty-two thousand six hundred, so we'd significantly uh cut the cost to, to our operations. Uh, it is important to note that we will still use some of the funds from the AFRAC project uh to purchase some additional ra- radios as backup radios in twenty twenty-six. But the bulk of the allotment that will be put aside will not be required, and so it will be returned, so council will save some significant dollars on this project. So actually, as a result, administration is recommending that council approves using some of the funds from the AFRAC's project for the purchase and implementation of the First Due system. As discussed in the report AIR twenty-four two thirteen. Open for questions.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions, Counselor Clark?
Um, so are we under contract at all on uh the I Am Responding system? Like, is there any contracts we have to get it over?
It's an annual, annual fee that we pay.
Okay, and then the new one would be the same sort of thing, just an annual?
Yeah, it'll be an annual.
Renewal, okay.
Yeah.
Um, now, with uh, with the software, the incident management system, like, is there any customization? And if so, are there costs associated with that, or is it just kind of off the shelf and?
Uh, no, all of the uh, all of the costs for any, any special changes are all already included in the, in the price of that.
Perfect. Um, and then you, you talk about the incident management system, so does that do like, does that help you guys investigate stuff?
Yes.
Can that be used organizationally then?
Yes. Uh, well, it's, it's designed specifically for fire departments, uh, emergency services personnel. Um, but yes, it, it can, can help with investigations, um, and it also is a good uh incident management tool for accountability of staff when we are on a scene. So if we're on a large scale incident, we can use. An electronic version of it to, to be able to uh, to look after our staff and make sure that they're all accountable.
Right, okay, so it's not necessarily applicable to kind of internal investigations if we have a safety issue or like that?
No, it's more specific for fire service.
Okay, um, and then are there any training costs associated with it? Like, of course, we're gonna train people on it, but do they send somebody out and, and do we pay for that, or is that just?
All of that will be included in the cost.
Perfect. Awesome, that's all I needed to know.
Counselor Commander?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Just wondering, going through that uh questions. So there's no near misses or hazards or anything that we can track with this new system, it's just incidents?
Uh, primarily just incidents, but I mean, it will track other things like fire permits, inspections, investigations. Um, all of those things that, that we're not really able to do with the system we are now, unless we do it manually, so this will automatically track all of that and. And give us uh instant reports, which will significantly reduce our, our time trying to get the stats.
Okay, okay, and also I notice, I'm sure, um, you, when you went to the report, uh, we probably mentioned that as well. So we are not gonna rent the towers anymore, it's all going through the internet.
It'll, it'll all go through our new radio system, it'll all go through the ra- the AFRAC's program, which is all funded by the province. We just have to cover the costs of the radios.
Okay, okay, so in the end, we're just paying for the um subscription and just a radio repair and nothing else?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect, thank you very much.
Uh, any other questions? Um, I just have one question. Uh, so you mentioned that um, that the AFRAC uh, AFRAC's program is funded by the province. Is there an allotted amount that? Is there, or it's just whatever?
No, they, uh, the province is encouraging all municipalities to move to the AFRAC system. Um, we've seen over the last several years with these large scale incidents, um, that we need to be able to communicate with our own team, but also with other agencies, with other teams. And the AFRAC system is the system that they want everybody to be on so that we can do that, so. Um, they've, they've put it out, um, it was primarily designed for the RCMP, um, as their new radio system, so the RCMP have been on it for, for quite a long time. Uh, and now all the other agencies are now moving, moving to it, like, Associated Ambulance has moved to it. Uh, all the provincial agencies like AEMA and all of them have all moved to the system, so now the fire departments are all moving to it.
So there's no additional budget implications at all?
No, just the cost for the radios.
Just the cost for the radios, um, and then the cost of the radios was, do, 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 is that the four thousand this?
So the cost for the radios that we have um put aside um as part of the AFRAC's program was a hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars annually for the la- for four years. Um, we are in year two of that program, and that was approved by council in twenty twenty-three. When we get, by incorporating all of these systems and by, by ha- getting onto the federal government program, uh, we will be able to significantly reduce those costs. So the, the, and by the time we get to twenty twenty-six, um, our costs will be uh significantly reduced, so council will save money on that program.
So the approval that we did back in twenty twenty-three, we'll see a decrease in that then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, oh, yeah, that's what I just wanted to clarify is that by um, kind of just going off of Counselor Clark's uh concerns, was that. We won't have an increase to, you know, training or operating or um yearly um.
Really fees for that?
Yeah, fees and things like that.
Um, the AFRAC system doesn't require licenses, so that will be gone, plus the tower rentals, that, all of that will be, be gone. So it's, it's worth our while to move to the system.
Perfect, perfect, so we'll see that forty-three go to twenty-two then. Wonderful, um, okay, there's no other questions, is there, Counselor, that'd like to make a motion, I believe, Counselor Evans?
I'll make a motion that uh council approves using some of the funds from the AFRAC's project for the purchase and implementation of the First Due system. As discussed in report AIR dash twenty-four dash two-one-three.
Thank you very much for that. Common question, debate on the motion, Counselor Clark?
Um, Tom, just one question, so that forty-three thousand eight hundred, that's shared between the town and county, so it would be technically twenty-one, nine each?
Yeah.
And the twenty-two six is then shared, so then it's now eleven-three. Okay, correct.
And did the county council, uh, when we approved in twenty twenty-three, was, did they match that as well?
They did, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, so there's a motion on the floor, I'll now call all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, next up on the agenda is nine point four Rural Winter Shelter Funding. Ms. Lola Strand.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, so I'm here to talk to you about the Rural Winter Shelter Program Funding, um, which is complex, um, as you can see. Um, since twenty seventeen, the town of Drayton Valley has had a standing agreement with the Ministry of Seaters, Community, and Social Services. That provides the operational funding for the provision of emergency shelter. Excuse me, this funding allowed us to operate um the Community MAT program, and then for the last two years, it's covered the cost for the operational, operations of the shelter pods, as well as some of, some of the operational costs needed to operate the Warming Heart Center. So whenever we um first got the shelter pods in place, um, we did indicate to the province the ability to actually stretch this funding. Um, so that, at that time, the province agreed to amend our agreement to allow for us to utilize six-month temporary funding. To stretch over a one-year term. Previous to that time, we're applying for funding twice per year. During those conversations with the province, it was shared that this amendment was unique and did not guarantee similar future agreements. Um, so our current standing agreement runs from May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, so while the current agreement did stretch the allocated. Welfare funding, um, moving forward, the province has indicated that they will go back to adhering to a more structured approach. Due to budget constraints and the need for more consistent planning. This means a change for us in this funding structure, application, and approval process. So. There are two streams of funding now that we'll be accessing. Um, preventative wildfire response funding, which is available from May first to October thirty-first each year. And the winter emergency response funding, which is available November first to April thirtieth each year. We do not yet have a, a standing agreement in place for the Rural Winter Emergency Funding for the term November first, twenty twenty-four to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, although the province, we don't have that standing agreement yet, the province has indicated that they have earmarked ninety thousand dollars for Drayton Valley, which is about half of the consistent amount that we've been receiving. Um, and then the application process for the next agreement, um, for the funding for May first, twenty twenty-five to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, will likely occur early in twenty twenty-five. Um, and I've been told that the province has earmarked it, once again, another ninety thousand dollars for Drayton Valley. So on there, never guaranteed, the province has expressed that the standing agreement will continue um in twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six using the same approach. So should we not receive the expected ninety thousand dollars um signed agreement prior to November first this year? Administration will prepare a report for council outlining other funding options for the shelter pod operations and for the rent for the Warming Heart Center. So financial indication, it, I do anticipate that we will receive it. Um, it is getting very late in the game now with our, our funding agreement ending, um, here in just over a month. Um, so that the next steps would be, once this agreement is signed, Humans Helping Humans and the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Team. Um, will be notified that the funding agreement is signed, and um they may be, once again, invited to come in um to council. Um, just to give an update, um, I have been asked to submit a, a more detailed budget to the province this time, so it won't be as much about um determining. Sort of which organization gets what, um, that's sort of been done in the forefront now. Um, so they are, they are, they do know and they are prepared. Um. And just awaiting my call to say we got the signed funding agreement. Um, so at this time, the recommendations are is that council accepts the Rural Winter Shelter Funding Report AIR twenty-four. Two, two sixteen for informationally.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Ms. Strand? There's no questions. Counselor Commander, do you have a question?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, go ahead.
Make a motion that council accept the Rural Winter Shelter Funding Report AIR dash twenty-four dash twenty sixteen for information. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I think that um. This is something that we used to go through quite a bit in the past and uh, always on our toes of whether we would get the funding or not, so it was nice to have um some secured funding in place. So um, I, I know that uh. This last year, uh, having that secured funding definitely helped, especially when we were going into the winter months, so. I will um hopefully agree with you that um and feel confident that we will see that money again before November first, and. I guess uh, we're hoping that we don't see you come back with a report and uh, that this just continues to be received as information.
The, the only um advice that I received from the province at the administrative level was to advocate. To the province that we continue with our um annual agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Through our MLA. through our MLA or.
So have we prepared a letter?
We have not. If council wishes to do that, we could do that.
What would be your request or what were you planning on doing for advocacy?
Well, the recommendation was to go through the MLA.
Okay.
Just, just to express how this does affect our planning. You know, as in the past, now we're approaching winter and we don't know if we have the funding.
Yeah. Counselor Coman, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering when you talk about advocacy and letters, should we add that to the motion saying right later to the points and the MLA? Yes, please. Yeah, thank you.
Can I do have a friendly amendment?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Clark.
I will make a friendly or suggest a friendly amendment that we add that council, or sorry, that administration draft the letter to be signed by the mayor to send to our MLA as well as, I guess, the minister in charge.
And that council accept the rural winter shelter funding report is information?
That too.
I will accept that friendly amendments, Counselor Collins.
Any comment, question, debate on the friendly amended moment or moment motion by Counselor Clark? And I'll call all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much for that. Next up is nine point five dress code policy.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The town of Drayton Valley has had a dress code in place since two thousand and four to recognize the importance of professional standards and decorum, the day to day operation. This policy stresses the importance for council administration to present a professional businesslike image to customers, prospects and the public. In the new proposed policy, changes include comments regarding accommodations under human rights protected grounds in addition to language that addresses safety requirements in our day to day dress. The goal of the policy is to ensure that all workers present an image, as mentioned, that's professional, that workers are presenting themselves and address that safe and that organization is considering accommodations according to Canadian human rights. And again, it addresses that employees, managers, workers and administration understand the responsibilities within the dress code policy. Administration recommends that council approve and adopt the dress code policy AIR zero two twenty four as presented in the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Counselor Coman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just went through the policy here. I happened to notice that on the scope, it mentions that policy apply to all town of Drayton Valley employees and council. I was just wondering, because we have our own code of conduct, does it need to mention council there or can it be only for employees?
My recommendation would be to cascade it out through all so that the understanding is that we're all have the same standards as council and administration.
Yeah, I would have the same concerns as Counselor Coman, as we have a remuneration policy that council falls under. So if we're going to be looking at changing that, that's the only thing, right? So that would be my question as well. Counselor Evans, do you have a question?
Yeah, just just curious. Number one, the hair should be cleaned, combed and neatly trimmed and arranged. Shaggy unkempt hair is not permissible regardless of length. I have a daughter with quite the head of hair. And I wonder if she's got dreadlocks, yeah. So would that be unacceptable under this? Under this policy? And, and again, I'm just curious. I don't think she has any plan to come apply for a job, but it just came to mind.
Sure, fair enough. That is the current dress code policy. There is no longer language like that addressed in the proposed policy.
I apologize. I was looking at the wrong one.
That's okay. Thank you.
I guess my only other question was, was there a reason or what was the reason, I guess, that triggered a need to change the policy? Were we having or seeing lots of incidents or something?
Sure. I review some of these policies on a frequent basis and this one is rather old. It's twenty years old. And there is language in there such as what Counselor Evans addressed about, you know, hair, tattoos, things that, one, are old standards, also could create some issues in human rights. And, and when we talk about equity, inclusion, belonging, you know, people with different types of hair, sometimes I might consider it shaggy, but how do you? It, it gets old and dated. It needs to be up to date to be inclusive of all, all people and make sure that we're following our due diligence and accommodations. So it just, it was time to update it, protects risk for those types of complaints and those awkward conversations. Helps, helps everyone understand what the standard is and just brings it back to light.
Thank you for that. Counselor Clark?
We don't have the amended policy in front of us, but are there provisions in there for, for uniforms? Like perhaps at the Omniplex?
Thank you for that question. That would be under our procedure. So in addition to the policy, should this be addressed today, there's a procedure that kind of deep dive more into those specifics. You know, for example, providing what, what be permitted or not permitted under a standard. Give some of those examples.
If there's no other questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a, a motion?
Sorry, I'm, and I'm sorry to go back to my original question here. So.
You could make a motion with that.
Without, okay, sure. In that case, I will try to make a motion with that. I would like to make a motion that council approves and adopt the dress code policy AIR zero two twenty four with the amendment of removing council as a scope and a purpose. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah, that works. Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Counselor Clark?
So if we're removing council from this, do, should we have a review of the council, yeah? Just to make sure that it's, that it's kind of meeting the same intent, right? You know what I mean? Just in terms of, is it up to date? And I guess when's the last time we reviewed it?
Well, I think at the beginning of this term, we did.
Yeah, we did at the beginning of the, yeah, term. And we updated it to social media policy and all of that at that time. I'm assuming that I think we are, we are good there. Just, just my thoughts, yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. And that is it for our decision items. We'll call a quick ten minute break and then we'll come back and jump into council initiated items, ten point one.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just get some clarification on that last motion. So the motion was amended by Counselor Clark. Do I have that right?
No.
You amended the, you amended the motion?
He made the motion with.
With an amended?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, ten minutes and we'll reconvene. We will reconvene our meeting at ten thirteen AM. We'll jump back into our agenda for September eighteen. And next up is council initiated items, ten point one. Counselor Evans had put this on the agenda for Civic Center festival. If you would like to go ahead, please?
Yeah, we had a, we had a bit of a discussion at GNP about managing the folks who are ending up in our vestibule and Wally, you indicated that much of the time you're taking care of them, asking them to, to move along. And just in casual conversations with the, the ladies up front, it sounds like they check at night anyway. I watched as a, a couple showed up in the morning. Sounds like they show up every morning and the ladies buzz them into the bathroom and they're in there for a half hour or so. I guess in my mind, ultimately, I would like to see us get a little more proactive with them if we can. Do we have the ability to get the community peace officers to move them along quickly in the mornings as opposed to having them hang around until you're available to, to, to do that? And, and personally, I, I, I think your, your time is probably better spent on, on all the other stuff that you, you have on your plate right now. So I guess what I'm asking today is can we put some sort of procedure in place where those ladies at the front can call on the community peace officers to come in quickly and move those folks along? Again, I was witness to one unhoused person charging their phone, lying across the floor there, another one sitting at their feet and the two in the bathroom as folks were coming in and out of the library there. One mother with a couple of young kids who were kind of gawking at the folks there. I think we need to establish that this will not be used as a, as a warming center. Especially with the colder weather coming, I think we need to establish that they're going to have to find someplace other than the vestibule in the, in the town office here. Yeah, so anyway, I, I'm curious as to what your thoughts on that, please?
The ladies at the front desk have already received the direction to say if they come in and I'm not around, by all means, call the CPOs. And they'll, they'll remove them as quickly as possible. You know, do we start denying access to a bathroom? I'm not sure that's the best thing, but also if they're in there for a half an hour, then, you know, chances are they're either sleeping or or doing something else. So we can, we can certainly talk to, to Alvera's group and good timing, Tom. And yeah, we've already, we've already taken those actions. We've given that direction to the ladies at the front to call CPOs. At, at the end of the day, Counselor Evans, they're not doing anything illegal. When they come into the vestibule and they're loitering around, we move them along as quickly as we can. And yeah, you know, the CPOs are busy as well. So if I can take half a minute to go out to the vestibule and say, come on, move along, I'll do that. I don't think we want to put the ladies in the front in that position. So, you know, to deny access to the bathroom, if that's what you're, you're indicating, I think we'd have to have a look into that and make sure we're not breaking any human rights issues or anything like that. There are public washrooms. Probably have to get a legal opinion on that unless Mr. Thompson has any additional information.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm curious how the rest of council feels about that. I'll, I'll, I'll be honest with I'll be honest with you. I, I, I up to this point, I haven't seen it as, as being effective, although maybe it was stepped up in the last week or two. I don't know. Has there been any, any change in the last couple of weeks to, to bring in the CPOs right away?
But haven't seen any issues, Counselor Evans, to, to, to suggest that we need to do that. But again, we've already put that direction out to say, hey, if they're here, call the CPOs.
Okay. Fair enough. Now, we have, we have no loitering signs up there. You know, we, we also have some of the unhoused panhandling around town. Do we have any bylaws in regards to this? And, and, and I'll add to that. I, I know there's been in, in previous conversations, it's been talked about, it's pointless to, to ticket the unhoused because of their inability to, to pay those tickets. But in my mind, ultimately, we may have to do something with the continually problematic few. And, and, and again, I, I fully acknowledge that it is a small percentage of the unhoused to, who cause us the most problems. And in my mind, if these two or three or four problematic ones end up where we need to deal with them more harshly, if you will, as in our discussions with the RCMP about charging them, whether that's trespassing or whether that's through the accumulation of enough tickets that we need to pursue that. I think instead of simply instead of simply moving them along, possibly we should start building a history of the issues we're having with these few troublesome ones. So if we do get to the point where we need to press charges or something of the sort, we have a history there. I guess I'll ask for your, your thoughts or Tom's thoughts on that. But the, and, and I guess what I'm getting at here, the bottom line for me is I think we're, we're enabling some of this behavior. And ultimately, when we start to push back a little more forcefully, I think it would help to have a, a, a history of the issues as they've, as they've come up. Please.
Well, thank you for that, Counselor Evans. We do keep records of any incidents that happen. It's occupational health safety requirement. So anytime we have an incident with, with anything, it's well documented. So from that perspective, we have those, we have applied trespass orders to, to a number of people in the past. We can continue to do that again if there's, if there's some issues. You know, the, 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 in all due fairness, the, the meeting that we had was just a couple of weeks ago where, where council has, you know, asked for us to increase enforcement around these things. The RCMP have, have committed to do their part and to move people along out of the vestibules. And they have been doing so over the last few weeks. And other than the incident that you talked about, about somebody laying on the floor charging their phone, I, I'm not aware of anything that we've had in, in the last week and a half or two weeks on that. So again, you know, the RCMP are doing their part. Girls at the front desk have been asked to call the CPOs if, if required. And we'll continue to do that and, and move them along and hopefully they get the message. The RCMP, you know, they will, they will move them along as well and, and eventually probably get frustrated. The RCMP, I, you know, they will, they will move them along as well and, and eventually probably get frustrated and start making some arrests. So, um, shy of doing trespass orders, uh, against, um, these folks. And having them arrested if they show up. You know, that, that, that process takes time. I can't get into the details of that. If Cody was here, I'm sure he could. That answer your question?
Pretty much, so you're satisfied with what we have in place? You feel it's being effective, uh, to this point? And that was probably, uh, uh, one off the situation that I saw in your opinion?
Oh, I, I suspect we'll see it again as the temperatures continue to drop. Am I, are we happy with where we are? I, I think we need to give it some time. Like you said, really, it's only been a couple of weeks. So I think we need to, uh, to, you know, give it some time, see if it happens. I can almost guarantee it's going to happen again in our vestibule, right? So they come in, um, and they need to get warm, they need to charge their phone or they need to use the washroom. So, um, you know, uh, absolutely, it will continue to happen until, uh, they move to another town or decide not to come here anymore.
Okay, and you, you say it may happen again, charging their phone, they're hanging out in the vestibule and that's the exact things that I, I, I think we need to discourage. So just, just, so just so we're clear. If someone came in, laid down and started charging their phone, would our response be to let them stay there for as long as they needed to charge their phone? Maybe have a little nap out there before we move them along? And I, and I guess that's what I'm getting at is, is I, I'd like to see us be just a little more proactive. As opposed to, um, accommodating. Because again, we're not a, we're not a war, that, that's not a warming center out there. I understand that they're public bathrooms, but, um, you know, the, the, giving them the, the, the use of the power and, and, um, having them just hang around out there. To me is what we need to address. There's, there's these families that are going in and out of the library. The eight-year-old or whatever, however old the child was coming out of there the day I noticed it, acknowledging that, you know, I'll, I'll acknowledge that this was maybe a rarity, but, um, yeah, having, having that, that young fellow look at them and, and kind of shy away. And his mother pulling him along, I think is just not, uh, uh, not something that we want people to experience coming to the library or the, or our, our building. So I guess with that, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now and, and we'll, we'll keep working on it, give it some time. And again, I would just request that we, yeah, uh, uh, be a little more proactive and, uh, and, uh, yeah, not, not so accommodating, uh, in the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Evans, Council Sheriffs.
I agree with Rick on a lot of points. I mean, to sit in, in our lobby and charge their phones and having a nap, that's what the warming centers for, that's what the province is paying for. And for those who are banned from that facility due to their behavior, well, that's a consequence of their action, right? Too bad, find a different spot. Also giving fines, um, I understand that the CPO and RCMP just kind of move them along, you know, go find a different spot. But there's few occasions where I've seen the unhoused intoxicated. And it's very obvious that they're under influence because they're doing some sort of a moon dance in the middle of the street. Just moving them along or, you know, go hide in the alley or the woods or do whatever, I don't think that's enough. I think fining them for being public intoxication, right? Should start happening and excuse of while they can't afford it, I don't believe that. Because most of them are on some kind of government assistance. They do have money, they do need a clean record to get their driver's license renewed. They need the driver's license to get into the food bank. Well, I mean, there's a system, right? And if they don't like being fined in Drayton Valley, they can move to a different town or maybe the town is a little bit more lenient with that behavior. But I think getting a little bit more strict on certain behaviors and situations. And to Rick's point, um, the mayor and I were leaving the office one day and there was a unhoused person with a dog, pit bull. And I love pit bulls, I, I have mastiffs and stuff, but the excuse of this is a service dog. Unless that person has papers for that dog, it should not be allowed in a public building or in a store or facility. So move them along or give them a fine or do whatever, right? That's all.
Thank you for that. Um, just to add to the conversation, um, I would agree with Council Sheriffs about the warming center. One of the things when we did have the meeting about increasing our enforcement was that, uh, perhaps we would reach out to the warming center and ask why, uh, certain individuals were banned? And if there would be a way that that's what the warming center was there for, if they could allow them to come back in? Because I don't think that a public building, the civic center is a place for, um, public intoxication. I don't think it's a place for loitering or bringing in pit bulls and things like that. We do have children that come in that are going into the library and things, so we need to be mindful. So there definitely needs to be an increase in enforcement in this building. They're not coming in to use the bathroom, they're coming in to either do drugs or to charge their phones. And, um, I think that if they can afford a phone and a charger, then they probably can afford some sort of, um, you know, charge that we're worried about that they can't pay. Uh, a crime is a crime at the end of the day. And when we talk about since, uh, we increased the enforcement, there has been two break and enters, um, by, um, certain people in the community that were caught on camera. Police reports were filed and no police have still gone to the businesses. They've used, uh, wire cutters to break into the fences, to steal. There's been several crimes committed and still there has been no enforcement, still there's been no charges, still there has been no police that have showed up. So, um, breaking the law is still breaking the law and we can't just keep saying that they're breaking the law, uh, for survival. Because it's, a crime is a crime. And I think that, you know, we talked about, there seems to be an increase in our homelessness. There seems to be an increase of people visually doing drugs on our street, being intoxicated over and over. And, um, it's not only here, it's everywhere. And so we decided that we would try a different approach, that this approach would be like the same approach you do to a family member would be that tough love. Tough love, stop enabling and let's do it for a few months. If it works, then, you know, maybe we keep pushing. If it doesn't, then at least we tried it, but we can't keep repeating and doing the same things that we've been doing because they're not working. So, um, I think that council is, um, you know, very strong when we say that we want to see the increase to the enforcement. We want to see some changes in the community. That's not just from us, that's from the residents, that's from the businesses, that's the number one concern that we're hearing right now. So our job is to listen to those concerns and to have some sort of action. Our community standards bylaw, um, talks a lot about loitering in there, uh, talks about, um, a lot of the things that we're dealing with. So we have the ability, um, to increase that. I don't think that we need to get an illegal opinion and it's great in our bylaws. So just my opinion that, um, we need to see that enforcement in place. Any other comments around the conversation? Mr. Ferris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If, uh, you would care to share the details, uh, after of where the break and enters, uh, have occurred and been reported and the police haven't showed up? I can certainly talk to our staff sergeant about that.
Okay, yeah, I did give that to you last week, thank you. No, we had a discussion enclosed. Okay, any other comments? Counselor Gamanna?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, Cole, what you mentioned, Madam Mayor, um, we all understand that, um, some of the individuals here probably going through a rough patch. Or they have mental health and drug addiction issues. But in the end of the day, we need to make sure that our community is, uh, safe. We need to make sure that the community members can go about their day in, in, uh, in a safe and, um, safe and, and a normal manner, right? So that's where we're trying to get at. We have, uh, resources that already provided to these individuals to get some, um, assistance. And, and of course, we need to advocate to the province to get more help, more support. This is a, uh, provincial matter, not a municipal matter. So we, we will need to keep advocate, uh, to the points to get these folks the, the right resources to get out of this cycle, right? So that's part of the, um, I guess equation that we need to solve as well. But in the meantime, um, I think, well, we need to, um, as we discussed with the RCMP, with the banks, with the, um, other organization on that meeting. We need to make sure that we enforce it, uh, make sure that, uh, we keep our streets and, and, um, the community safe. Thank you.
Counselor Evans?
Well, would you like a, but we're, I guess in the end, we're maybe asking the, the, the CPOs to reallocate some time here. As you indicated, they're very busy. Would you like a council motion, uh, just indicating that we'd like the, the enforcement to step up? Or is this conversation alone enough to, to let you and your people get started on it?
I think for now, we're, we're fine. Again, I, I think, you know, we have, uh, the town, the CPOs and the RCMP have increased enforcement. And, um, uh, again, so I, I, I don't think we need a motion at this time. If, if, uh, you know, two weeks from now at our next council meeting, if council is still, um, unpleased with the level of enforcement and you want to see an increase in that, then, uh, yeah, we'll, we would take a motion on that. Because at the end of the day, it's probably going to acquire, acquire, require either a reallocation of resources or something else won't get done. Or some funding to hire some security to, uh, to, to, and security, you know, uh, they don't have the ability to arrest. So, um, you know, it would be to keep people moving along. And if that's not meeting council's wishes, uh, about how to handle the unhoused, then, um, then yeah, we'll probably have to have a motion of council to redirect, um, uh, some resources, both CPO and RCMP to help address the issue.
Fair enough, thank you. Uh, yeah, I don't think there's an appetite of, on council to hire, uh, uh, private security. In our conversations, I think there would be more a desire to reallocate some of the CPOs, uh, uh, time to concentrate more on, on this problem. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sheriff?
Counselor Gamanna's comment, um, kind of brought something, um, so lobbying to the province for more support. But we already, I mean, as a province, as, as a whole country, spend a lot of money on the unhoused and trying to provide services and help and shelters and so forth. But is there a way that when an unhoused person gets a fine, that it can be deducted from whatever social government assistance they get? Is, is, is that something that could happen, is happening? Or could we maybe talk to the province about making it happen? Because I mean, I understand that minimum age payment in Alberta is eighteen hundred and thirty-seven dollars a month, right? That's a lot of money for some person that's unhoused. If they are misbehaving or breaking the law and they get four hundred dollars worth of tickets throughout the month. If the next payment they receive is only fourteen hundred dollars, that might maybe change their mind about their lifestyle. Because I think supports, shelters, just saying, well, they can't afford it, so we won't give them a ticket. I think that is encouraging behavior that is happening. It's not, it's not helping anybody and just costing taxpayers money.
Well, thank you, Counselor Sheriffs, through the chair to you. The, the, if individuals aren't paying their fines, then the province or the feds have their process, just as we do, to send them to collections. And, and, uh, you know, go through that process before they start garnishing their wages. I, and, and frankly, it's a question for, for the province, not, not really for me, but we can certainly push that along and ask it.
Okay, I, I, I think that, I don't know if anybody else agrees with me, but I think that's something that I would probably talk to the ministers about when I get a chance to.
Yeah, I think it's worth an asked question if there's any way, right? Okay, perfect. Okay, so we'll move along the agenda then. Next up is department reports, uh, eleven point one, Community and Recreation Service Department report. I believe Ms. Trent is doing this this morning.
Okay, lots of things happening in, uh, Community Services and Recreation, um, over at the Early Childhood Development Sector. They're quite busy, uh, right now, transitioning all the new children who have, um, just started program there this month. There's, I believe, about sixteen new children who have transitioned in, so they're quite busy there. Um, there's still a couple of spots available before they fill the last of their available spaces. So, um, if anyone still needs care, there's still a couple of, um, I believe, part-time spots available. Um, FCSS, um, once a year, the Drayton Valley District FCSS Board, uh, members of town and county councils, um, as well as staff, take the opportunity to explore, uh, the projects and programs that FCSS offers and funds, um, by taking a tour throughout the community. That is scheduled for October twenty-first and of course, uh, council is all invited to attend that. It's just an opportunity to, to go and, and actually see, um, the programs that are being offered as a result of FCSS funding. And, and chat to participants as well. So so far confirmed, we have, uh, the Drayton Valley Community Food Bank, the Drayton Valley Youth Hub, Brighter Futures. Um, and we'll be having presentations from the Family Wellness Program as well, so we hope to see you all there. Um, the Omniplex, both the ice surfaces are in and being used throughout the preseason. And a lot more demand, um, for ice is due to the increase in participation numbers, um, mentioned above with fifty, um, kids showing up to fun hockey. So that's huge. Over at the Ricochet OlaCorp Aquatic Center, um, the team has returned back from Australia, the JLC team. Uh, returned back with a bronze medal in the simulated emergency rescue competition award. They placed in the top ten for each of the relays out of the twenty teams. One athlete successfully secured seventh place in the world for the line throw. All individuals swam their personal best in the competition, so that's awesome. Just to note under Community Services, um, the Urban Housing Program waitlist, the affordable housing is growing, um, by the day. We are currently, um, I have a total list of forty-seven individuals looking for affordable housing. We have sixteen looking for one bedrooms, thirteen looking for two bedrooms and eleven on the waitlist for three bedrooms. And then we have seven applications that are incomplete. So that number is growing by the day. Um, facilities, uh, facilities very busy, um, repairing the fire system, doing the water treatment planned. Planning for the Omniplex speaker install to be done in the upcoming weeks, repairs done to the, um, siding between the MCC and the curling lounge. And providing info to the engineer for library washroom renovation possibility. And also, um, Mr. Van Claver asked me to note that the, where is he here? The event the other night down at the pond was a great success. They handed out two hundred and twenty-two lanterns on Wednesday night. According to his numbers, there was four hundred and eighty lanterns going out. According to his numbers, there was four hundred and eighty lanterns going out, so we ended up with two hundred and fifty-eight lanterns left over. So he said it was a great event with an awesome turnout, the weather was great and looking forward to it again next year. And that's all.
Great, thank you very much for your report. Any questions for Ms. Strand? No, thank you very much for it and thank you to everybody from the Sustainability Committee and team that made the evening such a success, it was a great turnout. Thank you, uh, next up is. Municipal Services Department report, uh, are you giving that, Mr. Ferris?
I can if you wish, Madam Mayor, or.
Or I can just ask if.
For information and we can take any, write down any questions that you may have for Shelley to uh, answer after the fact.
Sure, uh, anybody have any questions or concerns with the Ms. Terry's report there? Do we have, I think Shelley mentioned we only had two summer staff or two staff that stayed on, I think, throughout the summer? Okay, wonderful, um, so that's it for, excuse me, uh, department reports, we'll move to council reports, Counsel Kamana.
Thank you, um, not a whole lot to report, just uh, on the eighth uh, Sunday, I had the cricket carnival. It was a lot of work, I had four teams, two from Drayton Valley and two from Edmonton. Playing here, uh, we had a very good turnout as well for um, watching a few games. More of, I think people are getting more and more interested on knowing what's cricket is and learning the game and all that, so it was nice to see. Community members who doesn't know much about cricket showing up there and then asking questions and all of that, so. Was a very successful event, but unfortunately Drayton Valley team lost, so. On the thirteenth, uh, lanterns on the pond, um, as uh, Ms. Rand mentioned, uh, or Hans mentioned, it was an excellent event. Had, everybody had fun and very good turnout there as well, uh, weather cooperated. And again, kudos to the Sustainability Committee and the, the chair for a good job there, thank you.
Thank you very much for your report, next up Deputy Mayor Evans.
Uh, not a lot to report, uh, a couple of agenda settings on the fifth and the twelfth. GNP meeting on the eleventh and uh, and as has been mentioned, uh, lanterns on the pond on the thirteenth and. Yeah, it seems to be slowly expanding a little bit and attracting more. Folks, as was mentioned, we had a lot of lanterns, uh, we had to make two trips. One back to shore to pick up another load of lanterns and back out there, so eventually I'll uh. I'll get it figured out how I can get those all launched and still floating all together before the first bunch hit the shore, but uh, it really did, uh, it was, it was a, it was a nice evening. I thought the uh, the bit of entertainment we had there, uh, the volunteer that was singing was, uh, was great and I think, uh. Yeah, we'll probably see just as many or more numbers next year, uh, which is, uh, which is a good thing. It's a good family night and I think moving it to the Friday was a, was a good idea, so the kids could stay up a little later without worrying about a school night the next night, so. We'll keep talking about it and uh, maybe add to it uh, next year, we'll see what the Sustainability Committee has to say about that. Take any suggestions, obviously, thank you.
Thank you very much for your report, Counsel Sheriff.
Much all the same stuff, the only different thing is, um, I attended a youth advisory meeting and Kundi was presenting about um, our CTC and. Giving a little information about education and expenses and such, that was interesting, it was a little bit of an eye-opener for some of the teenagers not realizing how much. A building like that costs to operate and lanterns on the pond and um, we have Mayor's Gala tomorrow, which I'm looking forward to and AB Munis next week. That's it.
Perfect, thank you, uh, Counsel Clark?
Uh, yeah, attended a couple of meetings, a community safety meeting, um, the gist of that meeting was we talked about the Travis funding that we get uh, for the. Heavy and wide loads that come around the town. And just where uh, we kind of, kind of allot some of that money. And there's some ideas that were floating around that group, so I believe Cody's going to come uh, at a later council meeting to discuss those and. See what makes sense for everybody. Um, and then also in that meeting, we talked about unfit structures, um, Adam Jansen, the Health Inspector. Kind of just let it be known, he's quite pleased with how that's gone in the last year, year and a half or so. Just that, you know, the buildings that were condemned, they've been taken down. There's obviously some, some mobiles that are uh, still boarded up, but he's happy with how that's kind of unfolded and, and what it's looking like. In fact, in Center Court, somebody's redoing one of those mobiles and it looks quite nicely, so that's good. The other thing was the childcare focus meeting, we held that uh, just this week here, we discussed, um, it's sort of a, this was a byproduct of the childcare uh, board meeting. Brought everybody in as well as some admin folks, um, and chatted about the federal government funding uh, of fifty-two million dollars and did some brainstorming. And kind of developed some potential proposals to bring to council to um, chat about and see if they make sense, A, and then B, if we want to pursue them. So at some point here, we'll, uh, we'll bring that and chat about that. Um, and then lastly, just setting up a meeting October third uh, with Minister Jones to discuss childcare. That'll be a virtual meeting, um, should be about a half an hour, I think that's all he can allot, so. That's all I have.
Thank you for your report, um, for myself, just lots of gala planning, which is coming up tomorrow. Lanterns on the pond, which was again fantastic, thanks everyone. Uh, I've had a couple uh, mid-sized towns' mayor's caucus meetings, we'll be meeting at Alberta Munis next week. With all of the members and trying to recruit a few more uh, small towns to join that as well. I did a downtown walk with uh, counsel sheriffs, just kind of looking at um. How residential our downtown core actually is, you don't really realize that there's over a hundred residents that live in this area, just around the civic center until you really do the walk and. Start having a kind of eyes on the ground, you know, and looking at things like crosswalks and sidewalks where we don't have and just that accessibility, so it was. And the park across and, and things like that, so it was a very interesting walk and hopefully we'll see some of those suggestions come as discussion, um, when we start having those budget meetings. I had a healthcare meeting with um, uh, Counsel Clark and um. Also just wanted to make a note that um, for people or for residents to beware, beware of fraudulent scams that are happening on Facebook. I have recently been targeted as my, my home address has been given out on Facebook and I'm apparently am selling something. And uh, but what the uh, person is asking, the, the person who's pretending to be. Is they're asking for a down payment on a dump trailer and so people have been giving money and then they come show up at my house and looking for their dump trailer. So I have reported it to the police and the police have said this has been going on for quite a few weeks and it seems to be that it's the same. Repetitive person or someone portraying, so just a reminder again, we didn't have the RCMP uh, doing a delegation this morning, but just a reminder to the community. To be very cautious, to be very aware of what you're buying on something like Marketplace or Buy and Sell or everything that. If it seems too good to be true, it probably is, so um, just a reminder of that. That is it for my report, uh, and all of the council and department reports, can I get a counselor to uh, make a motion to accept all of these as information, please? Counsel Kamana, thank you very much, uh, next up is council items, roundtable discussion, does anybody have anything here to discuss? Counsel Kamana?
Um, just a, a concern that um, one of the residents brought to me, um, I guess we've. Advertised or we've uh, published that we are trying to monetize the uh, Siani dump. Or there has been some discussions, um, I, I lost that uh, where I came from, but just wondering where are we at with it? So the uh, the gentleman that talked to me or a couple of uh, people that talked to me, kind of saying that, you know, um, if uh. Just to figure out how much revenue are we looking at? Doing that versus the, the revenue maybe we are getting from tourism, uh, if we don't. Monetize that and, and having that as a free service, right? So just to, to weigh the two and, and figure out is it worthwhile actually doing that or not? So I'm not sure where we are with that process, just wanted to get an update and also at some point would that come to council as well?
Yeah, I came to council, uh, Counsel Kamana, I think it was the last meeting and the meeting before with uh, proposals on, on what to do. Council uh, gave direction to uh, do some counts to uh, see how many. Uh, RVs that we, we get there, we had a discussion about what type of cameras to put there. And so the cameras, I believe, um, have been put in place and those counts will happen and we'll bring that report back. You know, we're not going to get a whole lot of good data at the end of the year here, so we'll probably bring the report back a year from now, uh, before budget.
Okay, no, thank you for that.
So will the cameras stay up over the winter, like as you mentioned, we're not going to see a lot of activity or will they come down, go back up in the spring when the camp, most of the campground's open again or?
Not sure, I think we'll leave them up for a little bit this fall and, and uh, most likely take them down over the winter just to make sure that they're not going to get stolen.
Yeah, vandalized.
Yeah, and, and put them back out in the spring when, when we start to see more activity.
Perfect, thank you, yeah, uh, we went for a bike ride last night, I think it was, and we still seen a lineup of, it was a Tuesday night of campers. I was surprised at uh, the south end, that people, the weather's been lovely, so people are still camping, so hopefully we get a few numbers or. For September there, um, any other conversation? Go ahead, Counsel Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo the um, or just talk about the appreciation letter from AMA. Uh, regarding Hans, Lola, Tracy and Ashley going to Jasper and helping them out during their wildfire, unfortunately, we. We got good at uh, dealing with fires and emergencies and now they're kind of leaning on us, which is great, I think it's uh. I think we have to do that sort of stuff because if we're in the same position, of course, we, we hope that others will come and help us, so. Thank you very much and appreciate that, um, it gives Drayton Valley a good look, so. Thank you.
Thank you for that and thank you, everyone. I just wanted to bring up uh, economic development, is there an appetite to um, continue economic development? I know some of you have reached out to me with some areas that you'd like to highlight or to work on, so is there an appetite to um? Go back to having economic development meetings or to attach it, um, as Mr. Ferris and I had discussed, potentially to the end of a GNP meeting? Or what's kind of, what is everyone thinking or feeling for that? I know we have a company that we've been um, dealing with a little bit, that I won't say in a open meeting. That Marie Lynn had the pleasure of going and meeting with them last week, so there's a little bit of that that's happening in the background. As well as other conversations Colin and I have had with the local company wanting to expand. I'm not sure everybody's feeling about the um, economic development, we do also have a. Meeting from Mr. Rob McIntosh, has that been? Scheduled? It, yeah, it's been changed, I know that it was kind of going around, or it hasn't been changed yet, okay. Okay, so there was that proposal, Counsel Evans, did you want to add?
Yeah, I'd be interested in uh, allocating a portion of our, of our GNP meetings for economic development. I'm, I'm all for keeping up on what's happening and what opportunities may be out there, what people are doing.
Counsel Kamana?
Yeah, I'll echo that as well, um, and, and probably the GNP date would be the, the best date because we probably are here for a couple, three hours for GNP and then maybe we can continue for another couple, three. After that for economic development.
Sure, that'd be great, so um, I'm not sure, Mr. Ferris, if you want to add it to the agenda or we want to have a separate after, but do it on the same day or something, maybe you can give it some thought?
Certainly we'll look into that, either add it as an agenda item to GNP or. Close a GNP meeting and have an Economic Development Committee meeting, I think either one will work.
Okay, perfect. Okay, if that is it, if there's nothing else, then um, that is it for roundtable discussions, we have four information items this morning. First up uh, is fifteen point one, the appreciation letter that Counsel Clark was talking about. Fifteen point two, concerns over emergency department closures. Fifteen point three, request for review and amendment of bylaws regarding fire pits in residential areas. And fifteen point four, Brazo Foundation meeting minutes for the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept these as information? Counsel Sheriff, thank you very much for that, um, do we have anything for closed this morning?
Not from administration.
Okay, council? No, okay, wonderful, then we'll adjourn the meeting at ten fifty-four AM. That is a record, right?